I'll call the meeting to order at 6:00 PM. The first item is, could we get a roll call of the elected officials, Crystal?
Councilman Churis is present, Councilwoman Gillian present, Councilwoman Runnum present, Mayor Pro Tem Young present, and Councilwoman Kermel present.
All right, if everyone would rise, we'll have a moment of silence. Thank you very much, and Councilmember Gillian will lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, the first item is public comments, we have two speakers. If, we have three minutes per speaker, so if we could have Mr. Dave Lorenzo come join us.
A little bit challenging because I thought I could control the screen here. Can you pull up the first slide, please?
Hey, before you start, this is, this is what you gave us, correct?
Yes, I did. I'm not going to go through all these charts, I just really want to go through some of the graphics. Again, my name's Dave Lorenzo, I live at 133 San Bass Road, and I'm here representing several families on the street that are involved in a drainage issue that's been plaguing us for about 30 years, and we're still thankful that we have a wonderful engineering team here that has, you know, developed a great plan for us and is going to hopefully get rid of some of the water problems we've had. However, as with any good plan, we have something of a challenge because we run into a bit of a problem with the drainage at the, at the release end of this thing. Do you have my charts up, I can?
It's, it's downloading, so you might want to start because you're at 2 minutes and 17 seconds already.
Oh, my gosh, okay. All right, so go to the, the second slide on, on your charts, and you can see an overview of the plot of land. On the far right-hand side is what the area gets flooded on the north side of San Bass. Down the, about the middle of the page, you can see a dark line, that's where the drainage is going to go from underneath the street, they put in two 24-inch crust pipes under there, and we've got a fall issue because right now the land down that ditch is flat in so many areas that we're, we've been holding water now for a month. The other issue is, as you can see, that line turns to the left, it actually goes uphill, and we have standing water there as well, and then when it makes the final dump into the culvert that's along Stagecoach, there is a, the oil company's pipeline that goes through there, and over the years, they've been doing construction in that ditch, and they've been dumping their extra dirt in there, and that level has continually increased, and every time we try to get in there to tell them, "Clean it back out," to where we, when we built the street, they refuse, they refuse. So, we've got to come up with a mitigation to solve that problem, and let's see, if you turn to about page three, real quick, you'll see two pictures on the top, this is where that ditch dumps into Stagecoach, and then I've circled the area where there's a dirt dam, basically a dirt dam, where that pipeline is impeding the, the flow of water. It's supposed to go to the left, which is the green arrow, it's also going to the right, and it's flooding my driveway and on my back of my property. The contour map, you see, that's the colored one, gives you an idea of what the grades are in the, in the area, and you can see the very dark blues are the low areas, and the lighter blues are the higher areas, and yellows are even higher, and obviously red's the highest. So, you can kind of see the water's hitting that spot and going the wrong way, it's going to the right, and it is flooding the area.
All right, if you could wrap up in about 20 seconds or so, we've, we've reached three minutes, thank you.
Okay, well, we never got our charts up, so I should get a little bit consideration. So, any, anyway, that's not, okay, so on page four, we've got, what, what's required? The first chart is, we need a key change, okay, to work with the, the oil people, to work on an alternative plan for that area. I put a picture in there that was actually on the website from XIT of a possible type of a solution. We also need to look at resurveying the channel, so it's actually draining because it's not, and we're going to have to regrade it. You need to also survey around my driveway area, I suggest we fill it all in, but lastly, I think whatever we do, we need to secure assurances from the contractors that they're going to guarantee their work as six months down the road, we don't, again, have problems. So, I'm asking for the council to take an action to cause some sort of investigation.
Thank you very much. All right, our next speaker is Cindy Voorhees, if you could.
Hi. I didn't know I was going to speak, but I'm, I'm glad to. I live across the street, my husband and I live across the street from Dave, and I'm going to ditto everything he said, and I'm going to, I showed this to Eric Contreras, but I'm going to give you, this is what my yard looks like almost any time, because of the drainage problem, it backs up into my neighbors to my right and into our yard, and so, and my yard is wet, sorry, is wet, and then we also belong to the Baptist Church right there, where, where all of this is going on, and my husband's been on the Maintenance and Yard Committee for over 10 years, and he mows that, and it is wet all the time because the drainage isn't good. So, you know, I want to, again, you know, everything Dave said because, you know, and we appreciate all the work and the improvements that are being made, it just has to be made correctly so that my yard doesn't look like that almost every time we get a, a heavy rain because the, the drainage is such that it just keeps backing up, and it's almost been in my house twice, and that's, I mean, that's not good, and we're on one acre lot, so it's not, you know, a small, we're not that close to the, to the road, so we just want to make sure that the drainage issue is addressed and, and fully taken care of because the city, I appreciate all the time and effort and money that they're putting into fixing this, but it has to be fixed correctly because we don't want this to, you know, like Dave says, come back and, you know, six months from, from now, you know, the dirt's all piled up again, and it's backing up into our yards. So, thank you for all of your consideration, and, and we just, we're just hoping that the city will, will back us up and make sure that this is all taken care of.
All right, thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
All right, the next item on the agenda is consent agenda, it's to approve the city council minutes. Do I have a motion?
Make a motion, we approve the city council meetings from October 24, 23.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor? All right, unanimous, thank you. The next item on the agenda is to award a contract for the construction of a wastewater treatment plant. Derek?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, council. We, as you recall, bid out the wastewater treatment plant project back in May, we had some high bids, we evaluated it, made some changes that we've discussed here, and came back and rebid it on October 31st. The, the original bid, the original low bid on that, and there were several factors involved in that, was about $20 million, $500,000, or thereabouts. We received four bids on the rebid a couple of weeks ago, they ranged from 13.6 million up to 16.8 million. The, the low three bidders of the four were about 7%, a little, less than 10% from each other, so we had very good bids this time. There were some alternates taken for a crushed aggregate entrance drive coming into the property, as you recall, we originally had proposed a street as part of the original bid, and part of the change that we made was to remove that from the bid, and we added an alternate to do the crushed rock because you have to have an all-weather road into the, the plant. We also had an alternate to change the headworks to a, a less expensive or a lesser headwork system as a, as a alternate bid, and then several other deducts for essential components that were really just put in to give you guys some flexibility in case the, the bids were high again. So, the low bidder was Graycon Construction, they were actually the low bidder after some, some wrangling with the, there was a lower bidder that pulled out, as you recall, Graycon was the next bidder on the original bid, they were the low bidder on this bid, they're a reputable contractor, we don't have any reason to, to suggest excluding them. So, our recommendation is to award the base bid for 13.6 million plus the additive for the access road, which was 73 point, or, excuse me, $73,780. So, the recommended award is for $14,547,435 to Graycon Construction.
How much was the improved road, I mean, the original improved road?
It was just right around a million dollars, so, I think it was 970-ish thousand, I believe, if I remember correctly.
So, the, the alt add is the bid, is the crushed granite, and then the improvements at the facility itself, correct?
Correct.
Yeah. Is that, that's what Michelle wants?
I think that was what was in the, the staff report. Just real quick to, to elaborate a little bit, so the, the changes that we made included, we had a 1-MGD plan, a 1-million gallon a day plan originally bid, we changed that to 750,000, and that was after some discussion and evaluation of, of your current demands and what you currently are doing versus some adjusted projections, or I should say, new projections for what we, what we think is going to happen, and so, the 750, we believe, is, is going to be just fine. We took out some landscaping, the concrete paving, which not only the access road, but some concrete paving in the parking area as well, and those are the, really the major changes that we made.
Is this plant able to be upgraded for capacity if need be, say, 10, five, 10 years down the road, if we need more, can that .75 go up to 1 or beyond that?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, very easily, and it's, it's a modular, it's a concrete plant, but it's modular in design, so we can come in and drop another basin in and, and get the extra capacity.
Okay.
One of the things that we talked about last time was on the, I guess, inside the plant, to make sure they have concrete, but also the, the coating on it.
The coating.
The coating on it.
That, that is part of the project.
Okay, good.
We did not take that.
Any other questions for Derek?
Oh, Graycon, which ones have they done? Anything, anything recently and kind of local, have they done any?
I don't know any that they've done that, if you're talking local, like west of Fort Worth?
Yeah.
I don't have any, but they've done a dozen or more in the metroplex over the last 10 years. They've been around a long time, we've dealt with them in the past, they're very good.
You want us to take you on a road trip?
Road trips are always fun.
We can do that.
Yep.
Set that up.
All right, any other questions? Do I have a motion?
I move Graycon Construction Incorporated be awarded the bid for the construction of the wastewater treatment plant in the amount of $13,606, 600, $13,655, and the award included the additive alternate bid of $940,780 for a total bid award of $14,547,435 contingent upon release of funds by the Texas Water Development Board.
Second, second.
We have a motion and a second, any other questions or discussion? All in favor? Unanimous, thank you. All right, the next item on the agenda is to consider all matters incident and related to approving and authorizing publication and posting of notice of an intention to issue certificates of obligation, including the adoption of a resolution pertaining thereto.
Eric?
Good evening, Mayor Pro Tem and council, Eric Mahawith Hilltop. I believe in the packet you have a draft of the resolution before council this evening, and this resolution and process is very similar to what the city went through earlier this year when you all issued certificates of obligation for this building, but this is designed for the wastewater project, and you'll notice here, there are really four key items in the resolution itself, it's Exhibit A within the resolution, and we also have a calendar I'll walk through, but in the resolution itself, one key item is the date that council would reconvene and approve formally the certificates, and that date as penciled in is January 9th in the resolution, and then also the not-to-exceed amount, the resolution assumes 4.135 million, and that's sized to produce 4 million into the project fund, and you may remember this is a not-to-exceed amount, we all, always have the ability to downsize, so we'll certainly be in contact, and prior to coming to council on that January 9th date, we'll make sure that the project is sized accordingly to fit the needs. And then, the other item's just an outline, a description of what the funds would be used for, you'll notice that in the notice, and then the pledge, the city would be pledging its ad valorem taxes, which is similar to its existing debt, but also the, the source of repayment is anticipated to be the utility revenue. So, the, these certificates will have the dual pledge, the city's tax base, and also the utility pledge. So, modeled out, it will be very similar to some of the prior debt that's, that was funded through the Texas Water Development Board for this project, so the same repayments would be used to repay the debt. And then we also have a draft of the calendar, I believe in the packet. Tonight, you know, the process with certificates of obligation, council would approve a notice, that notice is required to go to the newspaper, and then once that first newspaper publication occurs, then we must wait 46 days, and so that January 9th date would be after that 46-day wait period. With approval on the 9th, that's the night we'd have the final interest rates, we'd bring to council the final repayment terms and so on. It takes about three, four weeks to close before the city would receive the funds, so that's included there in the draft calendar, and of course, between now and that January 9th date, we would go to work and position the, the city to go to the market and finalize the sales. We also have a draft of the estimated repayment structure, keep in mind, we always try to be conservative on these early estimates, we will not have final interest rates until that January 9th date.
Okay.
What'd you model this at?
A little over five and a quarter. We had a nice little rally in our market today and last week, so we'll see how it turns up through the holidays.
All right, do we know where we stand on, like, what has been spent on wastewater, knowing where our bid came in, and, I mean, we're obviously posting 4 million, and so do we know, are we thinking we're pretty close to that for what we're going to need for this bid we awarded?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, I think we have available to us, what we got, I got Jake and Q.
You have about 11 and a half.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, you're, you're well over what?
Yeah.
Okay, perfect, okay. And, and so we can refine that number if that changes?
We can, yes.
Between now and then, but, perfect, okay.
Typically, probably a week or two before that, January 9th date, we'll certainly be in touch and make sure we.
Lock in that, that final number.
Yep.
Okay, any other questions or discussion for, all right, do we have a motion?
I move that council direct staff to authorize a publication and posting of notice of intention to issue certificates of obligation in an amount not to exceed $4 million for the purpose of paying contractual obligations to be incurred for wastewater utilities and the financing thereof, including the adoption of a resolution pertaining thereto.
All right, we have a motion, do we have a second?
A second.
Motion and a second, any further discussion? All in favor? Unanimous, thank you. All right, the next item on the agenda is to approve a resolution finding and declaring that the city of Willow Park has more than 5,000 inhabitants in the corporate city limits of the city. Mr. Collins?
So, this impacts our ETJ boundary and where you are. Pat, if I mess this up, you know, I want to ask for a lifeline here, but if you are less than 5,000, your ETJ line from your corporate boundary is one-half mile, if you are more than 5,000, your ETJ boundary is one mile, and then there's another threshold for like 100,000 or, or something along those lines, which we clearly are not. But we can certify our population of 5,000 or more in a couple of different ways. One is, I think we can do that through the census, but the other preferred method that, that we would, most cities prefer, and staff certainly prefers, is that we use our water connections, and then there's a multiplier to that, and so, we have 2,281 water accounts, you multiply that by 3 and 1/2 residents, and that easily gets you to 7983. We also have 141 garbage-only accounts in the city, and so, if you add those factors in, and add another 493 to this nearly 8,000 population, regardless, we are clearly above 5,000, and that would allow our ETJ limit to expand one mile from the current city limits.
All right, any questions for Brian? Or Pat? All right, do we have a motion?
I move to approve the resolution certifying the population of the city of Willow Park to be greater than 5,000 as presented.
All right, we have a motion. A second by Greg. All in favor? Unanimous, thank you. All right, the next item, to consider and take action on a resolution declaring the city's intent to begin annexation of approximately 7,815 feet comprising 10.95 acres of East Bankhead Highway, directing city staff to prepare a service plan and scheduling two public hearings on the proposed annexation. Tony?
Mayor Pro Tem and council, on August 8th, the city council accepted the four tracts of land owned by Dustin and Jamie Haney into its extraterritorial jurisdiction and approved the developers' agreement with a petition for annexation to the city of Willow Park as soon as the property was eligible for annexation. This resolution represents the city's intent to annex East Bankhead Highway to the Haney properties into the city of Willow Park. Staff recommends approval of resolution as presented.
Any questions for Tony?
I'll add, if, if that's okay with you, we took this to commissioners' court yesterday morning for the approval of annexation of Bankhead Highway since the statute, it's 431055, and Local Government Code, Chapter 43, 1055, and we can use a road, if, as long as we're annexing to a certain spot, we can use a county road or a state highway as part of our city limits, this is how we can annex Haney without annexing neighboring properties, as long as he touches Bankhead Highway, which his property does, then that's considered connectivity to our city limits. Commissioners' court voted on this yesterday morning, it was a unanimous decision, we got the resolution today from the county, and so, we would recommend passage.
All right, any other questions for Brian or Tony?
When will we be setting the public hearings, such a public hearings?
It'll be December 12th at our meeting. We'll have three public hearings.
December 12th?
December 12th.
All right. Do I have a motion? Do we need to read the resolution caption?
Yes.
Okay. The resolution is, a resolution declaring the city's intent to begin annexation of approximately 7,815 feet of East Bankhead Highway, right-of-way comprising approximately 10.95 acres of land and the, into the territorial limits of the city of Willow Park, directing city staff to prepare a service plan for the extension of municipal services to the proposed annexation area, and setting two public hearings on annexation. So, that is the resolution, if we could have a motion.
Make a motion that we accept it as stated.
All right, we have a, a motion, I'll second it for you, Sean, there you go. All right, a motion and section, second, any other questions before we, all right, all in favor? All right, unanimous, thank you. All right, the next item on the agenda is to consider and take action on a resolution accepting the annexation petition from Dustin Kyle Haney and Jamie Lynn Haney requesting annexation of an approximately 31.247-acre tract, directing city staff to prepare and negotiate an annexation services agreement and scheduling a public to prepare and negotiate an annexation services agreement and scheduling a public hearing on the proposed annexation.
Mayor pro temp and council, this is a follow-up, obviously, of what we've just done. So this is the actual annexation for a resolution accepting the property owner's petition as the city for, to the city for its annexation into the city of Willow Park. And staff recommends approval of the resolution as presented.
All right, do you have any further questions? Different piece of property, but same, same process. Right.
Yep.
It's a little different. This is the second step. You only have to have one public hearing. And so it's a little different process. It's under a different procedures under the local government code.
Okay.
We'll have it all same night. We'll have three public hearings.
Okay.
All on December 12th. I'll read the resolution, the caption if you want me
Go ahead, Brian. Read the resolution, the proposed.
Resolution states, the resolution is accepting the petition from property owners Dustin Kyle Haney and Jamie Lynn Haney requesting annexation of approximately 31.247 acre tract, setting a date, time, and place for a public hearing on the proposed annexation, directing city staff to prepare and negotiate an annexation services agreement with the property owners pursuant to Section 43.072 of the Texas Local Government Code, and authorizing and directing the city secretary of the city of Willow Park to publish notice of such public hearing.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
That we accept the resolution as read with a second by Mr. Gillian. Any other discussion? All in favor? Unanimous? Thank you. We have to draw straws on reading resolution.
I don't know.
All right, the next item is to approve the city's fourth quarter financial report. Jake?
Good evening. So this is going to give basically the most recent fiscal year, a couple of things I'll just point out. You know, between now and the audit, there still will be a few adjustments. I mean, I just talked to Candy, we're still, a few items were still accruing into the prior year. But I didn't want to wait till December to present the information that we have, right? And so this is still going to give you a pretty good overview of the most recent fiscal year. So you kind of see on there the overview. So I'll start with general fund and just point out a few things that I've noticed. And again, if you have questions, anything, just let me know. So you can see on their general fund for the year, we have the surplus of about 426,000. If you take out the bond proceeds, which again, we've done this in some of the prior meetings to give you more of a real picture of the operating results in the general fund for the year. So if I take out the bond issuance of this building and purchasing the building, our revenue was 5,581,000. So that was about 190 over budget. So the revenue ended up coming over and the expenses were 5.594 million. So again, that was 262 over budget. And take that in mind, we had about a $40,000 surplus in general fund. So little surplus, close to break even. The thing that I would say, and you'll see this across our three major funds, is the revenue was up, which is great. You're seeing the revenue growth, but at the same time, the expenses were up as well, which is not to be unexpected, right? Because of inflation, some increased costs, things like that. You're seeing that the increase on both sides. So that's why you don't see, you know, some years in the past, you've had some larger surpluses on some of your funds. You don't necessarily have that this year. But again, you're still seeing that growth. It just, you have some expenses offsetting that. Within general funds, there's again, just a few items point out, your biggest driver is your sales tax. You're at 447,000 from last year. So that's the big thing driving your growth there. Also is over budget. Your property tax was basically flat, which obviously you had expected when you set the rate. Your permits were down about 208,000 from the prior year. So again, that's just with the slower growth that did offset a little bit. And then just a few other surplus items that you had this year that were over budget or things that weren't budgeted. You had the rental income. So from that space over there, you're starting to get some of that to offset some of your operating cost. The resource officer over at the school, and then you're starting to generate some decent interest income on your bank account. So that was 62,000 over budget. So those are some of the things that resulted in you being over budget on the general fund. On the expense side, the biggest increase on that is really within personnel. It was up 613,000 from last year. There was, I know you all hired some new positions, things that were brought in-house. Obviously, you had some increases. Then also, there was the one-time payment on the accrued comp time. So there's some things in there that resulted in that expense increase, some were one-time on that. And then there's a few unbudgeted items, a few little capital costs, things like that, which again, caused you to be a little bit over budget. But again, not, not a huge amount, about 5% in total on your expenses. So that's where you, so again, general fund in a good position. Over the last three years, you've continued to build up reserves. So cash-wise, you're still in a, in a strong position and your operating account has over 1.2 million in the general fund portion. So you're in a great position on the general fund. And obviously, you've seen the growth on the sales tax. Water fund, again, user charges, strong, and you're seeing some growth there. So you actually hit $3 million this year, water fund, user charges, which is up 350,000 from last year. So that's, that's a good sign. You're getting new connections on the water side. Impact fees were down, again, and below budget. That's something that, because of development. So you're 210,000 below budget. And then again, interest income was another driver on the revenue side there. So you can see you're, you're above budget on the, on the actual revenue and on the expense side as well. On the expense, so the expenses are up 419,000. Really, if you just look at it, 400 of that was that transfer that you didn't have last year to wastewater. So if you take that out, you know, your expenses would almost be flat. And honestly, if you take that out, you'd be looking at a surplus of 311,000. So water fund, actually, year over year, is still performing pretty strong. But like we've talked about, we're kind of using that to help that wastewater fund to help service some of that debt. So that's why you actually see that it's a little bit of deficit. But the reality is, on its own, that fund is very healthy. On the wastewater side, I know we've touched on this fund quite a bit, but good news is user charges, 794,000. So you are starting to see that tick up a little bit. The last month, so in September, I think we hit 76,000 in that given month. The new rates, you know, that's going to kick in October. So I think they'll get in the 90s hopefully. So you're going to start to see that and that will help on that side. Again, the biggest thing there obviously is a debt service that we didn't have in the past. We've talked about and just being able to service that. Obviously, you know, what Eric talked about and the new issuance, that's just something we'll have to address when we know the actual numbers on that, what the debt service payments will be. And kind of by that time, the good thing is we'll have, we'll have a little bit more time on the new rates and between the first bond payment to see, okay, what's the new rates brought in revenue wise, where we at, will give some flexibility there. Just a couple of other things to point out. I know on that little capital project, you can see the wastewater package plan, I put that on there. So that 13 million, that was basically the cash that we had in there at the end of September. Derek had mentioned 11.5. We spent about 1.4, 1.5 in October for that affluent line that was released. We haven't spent it all yet, but it's just basically, the development board had to release those funds. So that's why we had mentioned 11 and a half remaining to be spent. And then obviously, you know, you know, on the new issuance. So it may hopefully come in a little less than four, but that was something to look at. Just on a couple of the other funds, so debt service, end of year cash was about 250,000. You started the year at 300. So again, we dipped into that a little bit, just service the debt. But again, you have a decent amount, a little cushion there. Tourism, ended the year at 467,000 in that account. So that one, with that hotel coming online, really started taking off. And I know you all have been looking at ways that you potentially could start to spend some of, some of that money. That was up 254,000 from last year. And then the only other thing, the grant money, that CLF RF fund that we had talked about in the past, that you had to spend by a certain time, that's been spent. So as of the end of September, that was basically all used up on some of the projects that y'all had identified. Any questions? I know there's a lot of numbers throughout, but hopefully that gives you at least a good overview of the year.
Any questions for Jake?
No.
Brian?
I talk to Jake once a week.
No, I meant questions for you.
Oh.
Regarding the budgets. So, all right, do we have a motion?
Make a motion that we approve the city's fourth quarter financial report as presented.
All right, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any other discussion? All in favor? Unanimous? Thank you. Thank you, Jake.
Thanks, Jake. Get to the dance.
His dog has a dance recital.
Next item is to approve a contract with Axon for the Taser 7 over a five-year period. Mr. Mayor.
Good evening, council. So we are seeking approval to enter agreement with Axon. We currently have the X26B. Those were purchased December of 2017. So we are over the five-year mark. Now the warranties are expired. Axon does not cover any replacements. We have two Tasers that are not working and we have more people that have come on. So with this agreement, it allows us to pay it over five years. We don't have to do a payment at one time because this is about 57,000 dollars.
Okay. Any questions?
You good?
I'm good. It's what it costs now.
We, the funding's there. We just need the approval to enter the agreement.
Yep.
Yeah. Well, I will say, when I first didn't realize it was over multiple years, I was like, oh, that's a lot out of the budget. But, all right, any other questions for her? Do we have a motion?
Make a motion that we approve the contract with Axon Corporation for the new Taser 7 for
Willow Park PD as presented.
All right, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next item is to approve a resolution electing a board of directors for the Parker County Appraisal District of Parker County.
So this, every two years, there's five board members. We, we vote on these board members. Parker County has 5,000, don't ask me how this is accumulated, but there's 5,000 total votes inside the CAD. We represent 50 of those 5,000 votes. The majority of the votes are held by the school districts, Weatherford, Alito, I think Peaster's in there as well. And so Brock. And so those, by and large, the school districts will set the appraisal district board members. We had recommendations to keep the, the same board members, Richard Barnett, Jerry Durant, John Hilton, Cody Lang, and Sterling Naren to serve on the CAD board again. Staff would recommend that we approve the resolution that's in the packet. And I have any, I'm here for any questions. You got, yeah, just go ahead.
Any questions for Brian? Do we have a motion?
Go on once.
Anybody? Somebody?
I'll make a motion to approve a resolution electing a board of directors for Parker County Appraisal District of Parker County.
All right, second. We have a motion and a second. Any other questions? All in favor? Thank you. All right, the next item, to an approving agreement between the city of Willow Park and the Weatherford Mountain Bike Club.
Mayor pro temp and council, Larry Calvin, with whom we're very intimately familiar, has been working with the city for nearly three years to create a trail design for our city. And he was responsible for doing the amendment to our, addendum to our Parks and Trails Master Plan, which incorporated a realistic trail for our city. And the reality of the Willow Park trails to begin this winter.
Yay, applause.
The user agreement with the Weatherford Mountain Bike Club should be in place to assign the responsibility to build and maintain the single-track hike, bike trails and indemnify the city. And this agreement is for a three-year term for them to do that. Weatherford Mountain Bike Club also maintains a commercial general liability policy in which the city will be a certificate liability insurance certificate holder once we execute that agreement. And staff recommends approval of execution of the user agreement with the Weatherford Mountain Bike Club effective December 1st, 2023 as presented.
All right, Pat, did you obviously review this?
I did.
Okay.
It's acceptable.
Okay, awesome. Well, I'll make a motion to approve a resolution, not to approve a resolution, to approve the user agreement with Weatherford Mountain Bike Club, effective December 1st, 2023 for a three-year term as presented.
Second.
And seconded by council member Gillian. Any questions? All in favor? All right, thank you. Thank you, Tony. All right, the next item is to adopt an ordinance amending ordinance, ordinance 887-23 Development Fee Schedule.
Mayor pro temp and council, this was for three fees that we changed or added to the fee schedule that we adopted. One was for the single-day mobile food vendor. It was erroneously omitted from the last that we passed. The non-sufficient fund fee was misquoted. We had $35. It should be 30. And then a copy fee was changed from the development services fee schedule that was approved by council on the 10th of October. And staff recommends acceptance of the amended ordinance as presented effective as of this passage.
You know my question. Anybody want to read the ordinance caption?
Give me just a second. I'll pull it up. An ordinance of the city council of the city of Willow Park, Texas, amending development services fee schedule, including fees for building permits and inspections, miscellaneous permits, other inspections or claim reviews, and irrigation permits, onsite sewage facility permits and repair permits, oil and gas well permits, demolition permits, signed permits, health permits, fire permits and services, including fire alarm review, fire sprinkler code plan review, and additional fire code review and inspections, special event permits, code enforcement, and administrative services, amending various city ordinances, providing a repealer clause, providing a severability clause, and providing an effective date.
All right, that's the ordinance. Do we have a motion?
Make a motion that we accept it as it was just presented.
All right, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any other questions or discussion? All in favor?
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, the next item is a discussion of public improvement district. Would you like to pick that off?
Yes, I'll do a kind of a preview real quick.
Okay.
So one of the things that we've been asked as, as we're a growing city, is our willingness to do what's called a PID or a Public Improvement District. Staff, this is very similar to a TIRS, but it's not a TIRS. I guess that's the best way to put it. And so what staff has done is we've tried to bring in some subject matter experts to give you guys a PID 101. It may be a review of TIRS, since I think the only person on the council when we did the original TIRS was Councilman Runneman.
Forgot everything about it.
And so we felt like we may have a couple of opportunities in the future for PIDs and TIRS. And we wanted you guys to be at least initiated on what that is. Feel free to ask any questions before we get some bullets firing. And so what I've done is Mark Kaiser is here, he's going to kind of quarterback a team for us. Mark is the former city manager in Stevensville, Texas. He's a very, very good friend and close confidant of Betty Chu. Betty, when she says she talked to the subject matter expert, she was ended up talking to Mark. I've known Mark 25 years. The other part of the team is Hilltop Securities. And so Mr. Maha has stuck around, not because he wanted to hear all of our resolutions, but he's actually going to have some content for us. Another part of the team would be Norton Rose Fulbright. They'll prepare the documents for us. And so I want to let Eric kind of give you PID 101 and what it is. It's kind of a high level. We don't have any specifics or details or any project, specific projects to discuss. But I wanted you guys to know what this is, be comfortable with the process, and have any questions.
Thank you.
What was yours, Eric?
Good evening again. As Mr. Grimes mentioned, we put together just an informational packet as a resource here this evening. And certainly would like to go through some of the bullet points. We included some information on the TIRS or the TIF. You'll see it, tax increment financing or tax increment investment zone financing, TIRS, TIF, very similar. So we have some preliminary information on the TIRS. And then we also have a few slides on the PID, a public improvement district itself. And so just jumping right in, page one, it, with the TIRS, similar how I know it's been a couple of years since the city has implemented one. But it's a defined boundary within the city's existing boundary or ETJ. And really what it is, the city would capture the value within that drawn boundary and that would be your base value. And then the, the goal is for that value to grow over time in the city. And then the, the, the goal is for that value to grow over time, and the city can either tax it through property tax or sales tax, and those revenues generated within that defined boundary go into the TERS fund. And then that TERS fund is defined on certain projects that can be implemented within that fund, within that boundary. So it's really focused on one particular geographical area, and so it really compounds itself. It's just a development tool that cities have access to in the state of Texas. And so you can see some of the bullet points on the bottom, some of the goals. Again, enhance improvements within a defined area and leverage some of those new revenue growths. And now, keep in mind, those revenues that grow along with that area, they do not go to the city's general fund or other funds. It goes into that TERS fund. Now, there are ways you can set it up to where the city gets a percentage of the growth and so on, and there is an expiration date with that. And we have a graphic that shows that on page two. On page two, just, you know, you have to define a date when the TERS is established, and that establishes that base value. And the example here on page two, assuming, you know, that the boundary's 500,000 is the base value, you can see over the course of time how that value, if it's, if it grows, the TERS receives some of that revenue through the property tax or sales tax, and then the city will see, receive the other portion. And then at some point in time, when that TERS or TIF expires or is terminated, then all that value growth, you know, is captured fully by the city at that point in time. Just a graphic to show, and you can define the percentages in a few different ways. So this example, just, you know, 60% goes to the city, 40% would go to the TERS in that case. So that was just a quick overview of the TERS in general. And I actually skipped over the bullet on the first page. One of the reasons we wanted to talk about TERS this evening, it can factor into a PID, the revenue generated within a TERS region help offset some of the PID assessments. We'll talk about those now, so I failed to mention that on page one. Then going back to page three, this is where we put a few bullets, thoughts together on the PIDs themselves. As Mr. Grimes mentioned, somewhat similar to a TERS in the sense that we have a defined boundary or a geographical area, and that's created by council, council action. It's not a separate board or governing body. It's a council-created district, Public Improvement District. And really what it's used for, and we highlighted the word "public," public improvements within that defined area, and it's really to enhance, create some greater amenities. The city would have some higher design standards possibly in that design district. And so, again, in that area, the, the goal is to promote growth, and the assessments are actually placed on the properties within the district. And you can see there in the middle, within that district, the city would have the ability, the levy assessments, you know, on property owners, and that, that assessment is tied to the land, for the life of that land, and so it can be commercial, residential. There can be a capital assessment for capital projects, and then oftentimes you'll see a maintenance or an annual assessment as well. And so as a homeowner, for example, if I were to purchase a home in a PID, I would know when purchasing that home, what the assessment is tied to my property, and that my property is within a PID region. And so it's a form of another revenue stream in that sense. It's, shows up on the property tax bill. It's not a property tax. It is an assessment. And so going back to the TERS, it, it's a way to build another revenue stream within a certain geographical area. And then you can see on the bottom, some of the projects that can be funded, again, public projects that can be funded with the PIDs, higher amenities, roads, public safety, parks, and other type of developments, sidewalks and streets and things like that. There is the ability to enter into agreement with the developer, and there's cash payments that come from the developer to the city, so there's also arrangements such as that. Again, this is just a high-level overview there. Certainly a lot of documents and things that go along with establishing a PID. I know Kaiser and ourselves and city, city attorney, and then bond counsel would all be involved in that process. Some of the goals on page four. As I mentioned about the increased amenities, there will be a service and assessment plan, and you would have a PID administrator in that case, and that's a, a plan that's developed going into a PID, that defines the boundaries, what the assessments can be used towards, defines all the ins and outs of the PID. And one of the reasons we're up here tonight is, cities sometimes choose to issue bonds, PID revenue bonds, and so it would be a debt obligation. It would not be a pledge of the city's general funds, water and sewer funds, taxes. It would be purely supported by the assessments within that PID region. So it's not on the city's credit, and the rating agencies have a history. It does not impact the city's credit rating. It's off-balance sheet is, is the way the rating agencies look at that, purely supported by the assessments. And then there are various ways you, it's a little different than a tax bond or a certificate of obligation or water and sewer debt. So the, the investor base is a different investment base, so it's a different type of bond. So there are different value-to-lean and ratios that we as advisor and your consultants help navigate that. It, it is going to be a higher interest rate, but again, it's supported by the assessment. And all the planning that goes into that bond sale, you know, we take snapshot all the property values of the developer, just a lot of analysis that goes into getting to that point to issue bonds. Then we have a quick snapshot on page five, just comparing TERS and PIDs in general. As I mentioned, both are council-created. I did fail to mention on the PIDs, the landover, the landlord or the developer within that region would need to come to council and ask for, petition the council to create the PID in that case. And that's really, as Mr. Grimes mentioned early in the conversations, really the reason here that we're here tonight is, you know, there have been some of those discussions and talks. As I mentioned, it's not a sep, separate governmental entity. The revenue streams, you have property taxes and sales tax on the TERS. On the PIDs, you have the assessments. Cost to the owner on the PID, as a property owner, you would have that assessment. If you're not within the PID, you would not have the assessment. Direct debt of the city on the TERS, that, that is, if you were to finance the TERS with TERS revenues, that would be a direct debt of the city. The PID, like I mentioned, is off-balance sheet, supported by the assessments, not the city. And then both have termination dates, as defined in the documents, when those are And lastly, just a few of the consultants involved. Ourself on page six, advisor, since there are bonds involved in some of the analysis and cash flows, when establishing a PID or TERS, we become involved in those situations as well. And then, of course, city, city attorney would be involved to make sure that everything within the charter and state law and everything's followed in that sense. And then bond counsel would be involved, PID administrator, I know Mr. Kaiser and his group, and you'd have consultants that would help manage the PID, because once the PID is established, you have these annual assessments, and there's some management that takes place. Certainly, it's an ongoing process. And I would like to add that all the assessments that are generated would pay those costs. So it's not, not an out-of-pocket cost to the city to administer, issue the bonds. All those costs for, for those different fees would be paid from the assessments in the PID itself. So it's not on any property owners outside the PID, it would be within that defined boundary. And then also, you'd have consultants for the TERS if that were ever the case. Really, what we see is cities, you're not obligated to, but you could implement a TERS alongside a PID, and that would help lower the assessment, because the revenue generated within the TERS can be used to lower that assessment within that PID region. I went through that fairly quickly. There are a few agreements. The, the development agreement, you'll, you'll hear that phrase a lot. That's one of the key agreements within this process, that the city would spend a lot of time to make sure you get that right with the developer in the PID, and it defines everything going into the process. Might ask Mr. Kaiser if there's anything I missed or any additional. Okay.
Any questions for Mr. Kaiser, or Eric, Maha, or Brian?
So, so is there any examples of a PID anywhere around somewhere in Parker County or Tarrant or somewhere where we might know what a PID is?
Yeah, they're, they're quite prevalent. I think Salina is probably a good example. I know you see a lot in Collin County up north Dallas. I'm surprised if you have some examples. I know he's firsthand example.
Lost Ranch is.
Yeah.
If you wanted to make a, actual, look up today, the city of Fort Worth has 14 kids, I believe, on their bookshelves. And I know Hilltop Security represents a great portion, and they have several administrators. A good example would be, I can tell you that the people that are purchasing homes now at Lost Ranch or building homes there are learning and understanding the PID concept. But I can take the very prevalent in northern regions of the National Archives and many areas. All up along 35, we can study a lot of that.
They've really taken off, I think, started up north and then certainly on the frame of the ground.
I think Trump Club is one of the first ones up in our region, that's our winner, I think that's right. Trump Club, I believe, and Hilltop, and they're representative. They become a tool that's beneficial to the developer and beneficial to the city, where you're not as much at risk. And I was, I can't be your financial advisor, I do penalize them, but quarterback side of me is going to be trying to tell you, you're going to be doing some risk assessment in this field, you ought to issue a TERS, and you recognize some of the risks that you all have assumed after the fact, and maybe we can try to discuss some of those as we go forward. But to directly answer your question, Lost Ranch, I can't remember what region it is. I think it's their PID district number seven. If you want to look it up, you'll need to describe.
What are the risks for the city?
And that, that was a good point.
The financial risk.
Right. And really, what the development agreement ties the city with the developer, and that developer only receives fund for the public projects if they perform, if they meet certain milestones, and the city controls that reimbursement of those funds through the developer. And so with the PID, you have more control. For example, if, if the city were just to finance, you know, water and sewer improvements, let's say on its own, through a development, and if that development never occurs, you know, the city's still paying the debt in that case. So that would be a risk by not doing a PID. But within a PID, the developer has certain incentives, meaning they would get the money if they perform, and so that would, really, the risk to the city would be if you'd ever have to foreclose or take over the assessment in those situations, since you are managing the assessments. And that's why you have PID administrators and folks like that to manage that process if that were to ever happen.
Who would still have real property to assess, though?
Yes.
Have you ever seen a PID fail? In that?
I personally haven't. There's, there's been some that have been worked around, worked out. I guess you, you have developers change hands. I mean, the, the thought is that a new development, if a, a certain developer or development firm were, were not to produce or go under, then you'd have another developer step in, and hopefully, if there's value within that land or that boundary, then you would hope that there would be another developer to step in and take on that property.
I know TERS has a certain ratio of commercial to residential. I think it was a 30% max on TERS. Is there, is that the case in a PID, or can a PID be used for residential development?
I might defer legally, there's a percentage max, but you can have a mix of commercial and residential. And that really goes in when that development agreement is put in place. All those discussions on the boundary really become important.
Okay.
But I'm, I'm not aware of a certain max.
I'm not aware of one, but all of those details are included in your development.
Question for Pat or?
Not for a PID.
Not for a PID?
They're traditionally, all residential type developments, many of them.
Yeah.
Okay.
And you can have different phases, you know, if you have a commercial phase, residential phase. So there's really not a one-size-fits-all development agreement.
So it's, it's a fairly flexible document, but the developer's agreement, all that stuff comes to council. Council will be fully briefed on, on all the pertinent details before anything takes place.
Yeah, and that's a great point. Tonight is, we're 30,000, but.
Yeah.
There, there are a lot of workshops and meetings and conversations that lead up to that point, to get into really the nuts and bolts of any development.
Well, if you recall, making meaningful milestones for the developer to obtain before he gets reimbursed is critical. If you recall, in our TERS that we have right now, we didn't have exactly that in, and so that's something that we've all talked about.
Yeah.
Okay.
We want something before we pay off.
A clawback or, or something, performance?
Performance.
Yeah.
Can you talk a little more about the assessment? Because, I mean, we all understand, you know, property taxes, sales tax, but the assessment, it seems a little different.
Yes, and it is a little different. You know, one way it is different from property tax. As a homeowner, if I were to purchase a home in a PID, and I'm aware of it, it's disclosed at purchase, I actually have the ability, would have the ability to pay that assessment in full at a given point in time. The numbers are set up going into the PID to where you can map out the assessments over the course of time. And so as a homeowner, you would know that assessment, and there's a, a limit to that. And they're all a little different, defined in that development. Here's the max assessment for this PID region. And then you can do what we call a tax equivalent. We convert that assessment to how it would look on the tax rate, and so you can kind of get a sense of, you know, we have school taxes, city taxes, and then this PID assessment, you can see the overall tax, if you will, within that PID region. So it, it's similar to a tax, but you, you have that prepayment ability, so that makes it a little different, but it's, it's purely an assessment on the land, and it doesn't, for example, if, if property values were to rise, your tax rate or your tax bill would rise, because your home's worth more. The assessment does not change. It's that, it does not rise or fall with the value of the property. It's a set fixed fee amount. So that, that, that would be another difference as well.
And the assessment's disclosed at closing?
Correct, yeah. And there's new legislation now, and I'm not too familiar with it, but I know it's even more apparent when, when a homeowner purchases a property within a PID district, what that assessment is. And like I said, it is on the property tax statement.
This has a termination. We talked about, what is a typical term that you see for a PID?
You know, 20, 30-year.
Okay.
Yeah, that range.
And it hasn't necessarily been set outright, but this is only for new building. We couldn't draw the lines, like, here's a new subdivision, and we want to include these 20 houses from the neighboring subdivision as well, or it's, this isn't going to affect any existing?
No, I think you can, you can work out the boundaries where sometimes it's not a perfect match, to where there's no existing, no development within the region, and so that, that would have to be taken into account. I believe that's part of the petition process, to disclose boundaries and what's included in the boundaries and what's expected to be in the boundary and things like that. So it's, it's really the current property owners within that region that would take the petition to council to initiate the process. And so that petition, that those within that boundary would have to be aware of it upfront for that, for that to occur. Property owners within the boundary would have to come to council. They would.
100% of the property owners within?
There's a, it's about a six-month process.
Yes.
The petition process, and again, I'm not trying to play attorney, but there, there's a legal process to do the petition and bring the petition, and I'm not quite sure if it does require 100%, but it does.
Typically, this is undeveloped property.
Typically, right. I just want to.
Yeah.
To make sure that.
Yes.
No one's.
No one's going to put a pit, no one's going to put a pit on your property.
I wasn't worried about.
Right.
But on that note, I would say that, that, you know, if possible, this would be a great tool for, if we, areas of town that need to be redeveloped or updated or things of that nature, it's another tool in the toolbox to use to maybe spark interest in other parts of the, of the city.
Typically, it's, you find it's one or two developers or owners in a certain property.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Any other questions for Brian, Eric, or Mr. Kaiser? All right, well, thank you very much for the overview. We appreciate it.
Thank you, Eric. Thank you, Mark.
All right. Next, we will have informational section, mayor and city council comments. Before I have comments, does anyone else have?
So on the recent completed projects on roads, we've had some homeowners that require or were demanding changes. or were demanding changes to those engineering drawings that we have.
Yes, sir.
And so I think we need to be a little more consistent in how we handle those. So going forward, I'd like to see, you know, what those changes are being requested and the homeowners, in my opinion, we, the rest of the population of this city is not responsible for improvements to their property. So if they are above and beyond what is absolutely necessary on that project, those, those changes ought to be priced to that homeowner and they have to agree to those changes and be agreement to pay for those changes, including putting a lien on their property if that's what they cho-chose to do. So we cannot be just giving out free services at the cost of everybody else in this city. So I think we need to rein, I've heard some things on their current pro, or the recent projects, and we need to rein that in because I, I don't like how that, you know, should, because we've got other projects, other road proj- projects coming up and we don't need that happening, so.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Some of the, some of the changes, like staff's gone out and said, this is a safety issue and we'll.
Yeah, absolutely.
But, but some of them have been more aesthetic and cosmetic.
Right.
Okay, any?
I'll tail off of that because my comment is if, if we could get an update from staff regarding drainage issues that were brought up, how it will be handled, what, what the thought process is, so that staff has a chance, since it was not on the agenda, staff has a chance to present what the design, how we're going about it. If we could get an update.
Sure.
On that and then maybe include an update, since I think it's the same group, of how we're handling some of those changes in the future. Because I, I agree with you, Greg, we have a lot of road projects that we want to continue to do. So we want to make sure that we're coming up with our system.
We need to keep the mid-budget and not give away the farm.
Make sure that, that everything's handled the same from this point or from what we've done in the past to all future projects.
Exactly.
So if we could just have staff brief us on that.
Sure.
Since Greg brought it up and since we had citizens ask about it, that way we can, maybe the next council meeting, get that.
Okay.
Any other comments by council or our city manager?
I have a comment for everybody else.
I hope everybody has a great Thanksgiving.
Well, we, we aren't close to a journey, but.
We are not.
We, we still have executive session, so.
Yes. Okay. I got to show and tell. She doesn't know this is coming. So just point blank, you guys are an awesome council to work for. I have, I have been in organizations where they say, hey, your family comes first and, you know, and then they say it, but they don't really back it up. What y'all have done for me and my family the last two months has been awesome. If you didn't know, I have not been here since the August 26th council meeting. My son is a eighth grader at McAnally Middle School. He's the starting middle linebacker and the starting fullback and he'd want me to tell you he led the team in tackles this year. I was available to see every single one of his games and be a father and be a fan because of the people on this dais and Mayor Moss. They excused me for four straight meetings and that is something that's almost unheard of in this profession. I can't thank you guys enough for letting me be a dad. Some of the best moments I've had have been watching Zach score touchdowns. And so that wouldn't happen if I was here. The other component is this. I have one of the best staffs in the state of Texas and I'll put these guys up against anybody. But my assistant city manager might be the best guy I've ever worked with and I love the man to death. We have had some pretty interesting discussions the last couple of days about some projects. But at the end of the day, Bill Funderburke's one of the best men I've ever known and I'm privileged to work with you. Yesterday was Bill's birthday. He's celebrating some anniversary of his 21st birthday. But Bill's favorite thing is the Texas Rangers. The man literally jumped on a plane, went to Minnesota and watched the Rangers get swept. And all, all season long, I kept telling Bill, the Rangers are going to break your heart. They're going to break your heart. All season long. And even in, even in September, when they lost like 11 straight games, Bill would come into my office and we'd have coffee and I'd say, Bill, they're going to break your heart. Nah, nah, Brian, we're going to pull it off. We're going to pull it off. Well, Bill, you were right. The Rangers finally pulled it off.
You want to listen to me more?
I should. I should. I think it's a sign of the apocalypse, but the Rangers finally pulled it off. So Bill, I have for your birthday, a Texas Rangers World Series shirt. That you can wear proudly, except for the city secretary who's a Houston Astros fan.
Well, here, let me hold it up. Happy birthday. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, dear Bill. Happy birthday to you.
I would like to comment, it was nice sitting to, next to a true Rangers fan for.
And he set the record.
I said it was nice sitting next to a true Ranger fan for at least four weeks.
Well, you set the record for council meetings. It's like 19 minutes and I know the mayor made sure it got in the newspaper.
Yes.
We marked that one down.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
All right, well, thank you. The next item is the city council may convene a public meeting and then recess and took closed executive session to discuss any of the items listed on this agenda if necessary and if authorized under chapter 551 of the Texas government code. Situations in which a closed executive session may be authorized by law include without limitation, consulting with the council's attorney to seek or receive legal advice concerning pending or contemplated litigation, a settlement offer, or any other matter in which the ethical duty of the attorney to the council clearly conflicts with the general requirement that all meetings be open. Discussing the purchase, exchange, lease or value of real property, discussing prospective gift, donation, discussing certain personnel matters and discussing security personnel or devices. We will convene into executive session at 7:15. I'll call the meeting back to order at 7:25. Out of executive council, I'll make the motion to approve the filing of the lawsuit against Half Associates Incorporated. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? All right, thank you. Right, any final comments? Counsel?
I wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Oh, one quick note, City Hall will not, we will be closed on the 22nd, not, we, we're going to have some training going on that day. That's the Wednesday before Thanksgiving. So we're going to do all of our cybersecurity training and all those things that day. So we will be here, but we will not be open to the public.
Okay. Do you think you can cancel the next council meeting?
Not yet, no ma'am.
Not determined yet.
And I don't, just for councils, but I do not think we're going to cancel the next meeting. I know we have two items that are very quick. We may have a third one. I may reach out to y'all and see if y'all want to do something before Thanksgiving, maybe that Tuesday. But, but right now we're scheduled to have it on the 28th, I believe.
Yes. All right. We have a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Right, the motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, we are adjourned. At 7:27.